...of June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, please rise for the plaid of agents. Plaid of agents. First item on the agenda is the approval of the warrant as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the warrant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That passes unanimously. Uh, next, we have approved. Yes. I did abstain from that vote. You thought you heard that? Great ears. Approval of minutes, uh, of the May twenty-fifth, uh, twenty-twenty-one meeting.
So moved.
Entertained a motion, she moved and.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes of May twenty-fifth? Say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That passes unanimously. Approval of the minutes of the June eighth, twenty-twenty-one minute, uh, meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Posed, four-zero-one. All right, uh, item four is the Mass Department of Transportation's Safe Roots to School. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're going to be joined by, um, there she is, so I'm glad you're welcome. And, um, she forwarded a presentation that we included with all of you discussing the, uh, Safe Roots to School program. And I think there's gonna be a presentation that we have and then, um, opportunity to ask some questions, so, welcome and thank you.
Yes. But Judy would just give us some background, that would be great.
And Bob, are you driving the slideshow? So Judy, if you would just let us know when to advance, that would be great.
Okay, um, well, good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I know you have a packed agenda. I tremendously appreciate being put at the head of the class, so thank you so much. And happy early summer. So we'll just, um, get right to it. So if we could have the slideshow put up, please? Okay, that is not it.
That's not it?
No.
That is not it.
One second.
Okay. I mean, I, I might be able to share my screen too, if that's easier. It's, uh, the MassDOT Safe Roots to School PowerPoint. So.
Presentation, this one. Got it. That's it.
Okay.
Korea, Germany, America, and Mexico. Alright, turn it off.
Korean always, Korea always.
Just not today.
What?
Maybe I was just bad luck.
Do you mind?
I'll get ready for bad abs.
All right, serial. We'll start there right now.
Thank you, thank you. And I think, yeah, I think.
And if I could just remind everyone who's, uh, not speaking, if they can do their microphones, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we were getting some reverberation. Thank you. Um, and this is it. So great. All right, so, um, so thank you. Um, so my name is Judy Quarker. I am the Safe Roots to School Senior Outreach Coordinator and Education Lead. And Burlington is one of the communities that I serve. The Safe Roots program is an international program. It's in about forty-five countries. It started in Denmark. In the U.S., it's in all fifty states. The parent, uh, organization is Department of Transportation. Thus, we are MassDOT. We are federally funded and therefore we are free. We are taxpayer money at work, so, um, you can, um, partake in our program or, you know, not so inclined. It, it, it's up to you. The focus of the program is, um, we would deal with public and, um, public charter schools, grades K through eight, for walking and biking to school, active transportation. That being said, we have a Public Health Foundation, um, which is, um, we're gonna review a little bit about those elements tonight. And so if we could have the next slide, please? I don't know if I can do it. Thank you. Um. No matter how your child gets to school, we just want them to be safe. And that is really the, the essence of this program. It's our priority. It's, it's, um, as much as we deal with, um, active transportation, um, you know, we deal a lot too with parent tran- uh, parent education, um, in case they are driving, um, as well as, um, circulation planning, um, for school buses. Next. We have a very deep toolbox and we are not a one-size-fits-all program. So basically, it's, it, everything is customizable and everyone's looking for something different because every community has different challenges and different successes. So this is a, a short list of some of the more, um, popular, if you would, items that, uh, people, um, or districts, um, might be dealing with, that they might need our help with. Next. So as I mentioned, um, we have a Public Health Foundation, which helps us bridge the gap between health and transportation. Um, and it, they're called the six E's and we're gonna review those a little bit tonight. Everything we do though, it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg. So many times, I think we've all had parents, um, say, you know, I don't want my child walking or biking to school because it's just too much traffic and the traffic goes so fast, et cetera. And what do they do? They get in the car and they're part of the traffic. So that said, you know, dog chasing his tail. We also like to, um, emphasize that we are not a stay-in-your-lane program. As much as we work with the schools, we equally work with municipality, uh, governments, um, and the community at large. Next. So, um, evaluation, we do different types of mapping. And in that mapping, we try to, um, establish where the students live and where their commute routes might be. So we, um, make walking sheds. Some communities, um, town planners like to use these as an overlay for a master head bike plan. And others, we're looking to create actual route maps for the students to get to school. We also use these maps for what we call park and walk locations. And it's just, as it sounds, we're trying to reduce, um, congestion in and around the school zones and school properties. So we suggest places in and around, um, the school area, you know, usually half a mile or a little bit closer, um, where people might be able to park and we're all counting our steps and then, um, can walk to school. A walking school bus is another way that we use these route maps in that, um, it's, it's how most of us grew up. Leave your house, pick up a friend, pick up another friend. Today, they give everything a name and it's called the walking school bus. Bike trains are the same, but just on a bicycle. So, and we also have, um, a, uh, whole library of no-cost, low-cost ways how we can celebrate how the students get to school. During this past year, um, with COVID, we've had a number of remote as well as, um, in-person learning opportunities to try to, um, engage the students in being more active. Next. Um, engineering, um, we do two different, uh, categories, if you would, with, um, engineering. One is an arrival dismissal observation and that would be the upper-left, um, photo. That's where we look at your school property. We're looking at how you use your front door, what type of signage you have, how you separate your modes of transportation, um, you know, how, what the school zone even looks like. And the second way that we can help with the infrastructure in the neighborhoods is what we call a walk audit. A walk audit is the home-to-school journey that a student takes, passing through the neighborhoods in order to get to school. And that would be the lower-left corner. When we do a walk audit, it's all hands-on-deck. This isn't my neigh- backyard, my neighborhood. Um, and so we might ask, you know, people from, um, school administration, from the building, uh, parents, PTO, um, you know, DPW, town planning. We've had school committee people, um, members come, um, youth commissions, student councils, uh, you name it, um, and the police. So, um, it's for all hands-on-deck because everyone has a different perspective of what the neighborhoods look like. Conversely, when we do an arrival dismissal observation, we don't want people to change your behavior. So we try just to, it's just would be me, for example. Um, and we just try to, besides signing in and, um, making the arrangements with the school principal, um, it's, um, it's a much more quieter operation, if you would. From all of this though, we like to try to create a school arrival dismissal plan. So many times principals will say, in frustration, you know, people aren't following the plan or, or the rules. And we ask, what are your rules? And oftentimes, they don't have rules or they're car-centered. This is why we call it arrival dismissal versus drop-off and pickup. We try to incorporate all modes of transportation. So we recommend that, um, schools have, um, some type of arrival dismissal plan. Um, we recommend, um, it's one piece of paper, front and back. On the lower right is the front, would be a map, and basically it's just a diagram, um, showing you how the modes are separated. Next. Oops, whoop, missing a slide. My apologies. Um, the back page of that would be, um, uh, text. And so that's translatable. It includes all modes of transportation. Again, it's unique for whatever that particular school is experiencing, both in terms of traffic, um, rules of the road, et cetera. And we also like to include, uh, school hours or your bell schedule because oftentimes that can be, uh, a little tough to find on, um, a website. Next, we have education. And we have two forms of education, uh, for students, uh, pedestrian and bike. Um, both are DESI-approved curriculum. And we are very proud because, uh, last month, um, DESI-approved our, uh, professional development, um, certification process. So we are in that long queue, so, um, making everybody happy. So. Pedestrian safety, again, these are more life skills. Um, we suggest it for grades two, three. Typically, we suggest for the spring of second grade and the fall of third grade, so you get into some co- the same cohort, you know, bookend around the summer. We talk about sidewalk, crosswalk, and park-and-walk safety. Again, all life skills. And, um, but, and any of our programs can be elevated for any program from, uh, grades K through eight. Bike safety, it's a little different. It is not skills-based because we do not have a bike for every child. Um, however, it's, so it's assembly. We do ha- talk about personal safety, everything from helmets to dress-to-be-seen to footwear, you know, how to make sure your bike is safe, and then rules of the road. And we also try to reach out to the local police or the school administration and see if there are any, uh, local concerns. For, um, pedestrian safety, we, during this past year, we've done a lot of, again, professional development, um, with entire, um, health and wellness, um, faculty, uh, departments, uh, which has been, um, exciting. And for bike safety, we've actually have been doing this virtually and we also have written, um, and video materials that are available. So, next, please. Part of the education is toward the parents. We try to educate parents that they are not in traffic, they are the traffic. So these are two photographs of what, if you had to take, um, um, take a wager, this is mostly what people are seeing at our schools. It's either a long queue on a public roadway, which is just, um, you know, makes, uh, passage difficult, um, if we're through traffic. Or, um, the bottom-right photo, which is anything goes, where, uh, rules of the road is not being followed. In this particular instance, someone's on a crosswalk, people are parked where it's posted, you know, parking, um, there's a car block on the entire roadway. And this is actually for an elementary school. And the bus you see is not going to that elementary school. It's actually stuck in the elementary school traffic, trying to finish its middle school run before it can get back to that school. So, um, most transportation directors will nod their heads when we give that narrative. So, next, please. So part of the education is that we have a few different flyers for parents. Um, both are available in multiple languages. And, um, this particular one is about, um, school zone driving. Next. And about arrival dismissal. So, next, please. Encouragement. This is the fun part. This is where we really celebrate how the kiddos are getting to and from school. The program has three flagship days, International Walk to School Day, which is exactly how it sounds, in October. We have Winter Walk in February, and in May, we have Massachusetts Walk to School Day. Again, we have so many different ideas about how to make it fun. Um, pictured here is a neighboring community that had crazy soft day. It does get more basic than that. And part of what we do for encouragement, I've already mentioned the walking school buses and the park-and-walk, um, is task force formation. If Safe Roots is gonna be in your community, it really has to live someplace. And again, this is not one-size-fits-all. In some communities, it's the PTOs, and others, it's the school nurses, the principals. It could be the police department. It's, um, the local ped bike committee. It's whatever works best for your community. So, next. Part of encouragement too is that we have some contests that we do annually. We have a lawn sign contest. Um, the theme this year was dress-to-be-seen. We've had a hands-free law last year, the year before, no idling. Um, and this is, again, open for grades K through eight. It's free. We pick the top five designs and we print them. So if you want any lawn signs with any of these themes, um, we can deliver them. This year, we had our inaugural Crossing Guard of the Year Award. It was a smashing success. We had so many qualified, um, applicants that we actually, uh, made it into five different awards. So, um, that was part of the fun. We also have, in case, um, um, some schools are looking for something to do during school time, whether it be a, a walking club during recess, or, uh, winter activities for, uh, PE classes, something, we have Walk Across America and Walk Across Massachusetts, um, materials. So, next, please. Engagement. Engagement, formerly known as enforcement, is where we work with our, um, local police departments and school resource officers. Again, they help us with our arrival dismissal planning. Um, I mentioned signage earlier. Regulatory signage is the only way you can have it on, um, municipal property, but on school property, the rules aren't quite the same. So, um, it's, it's identifying what the police can enforce and what they cannot enforce. So, um, the picture you see here is actually a bike assembly, um, in, um, a community not too far from here. Local police had contacted us to say that they were having some issues around this one intersection. So I said, well, you want a few minutes of time? So they spoke a little bit with the kids and, and I took over. So, um, just all part of the fun. We're all trying to send the same message of safety. Next, please. Policy. We all know, I don't need to tell you particularly, um, good policy is good management. So, we've actually partnered with the MASC. And we have, um, two different policies. We have a, uh, Wellness Policy Amendments, um, that include active transportation. It talks a little bit again about just having i- it as a way to get to and from school and some of the resources, um, and appropriate infrastructure that you may need, um, to make this safer and have it happen. The municipal counterpart, you've probably heard, is Complete Streets Policy. So, just trying to do the balancing act there. Next, please. The money. Everybody wants to know where the money is. So, um, I put asterisk on this slide, um, for your benefit. So, um, for a Safe Roots, um, grant, again, doesn't cost anything to apply. However, there is a requirement that you need to be a partner with our program for a minimum of six months. We have, um, to be a school partner, it's very easy. It's, um, a one-piece page of, a piece of paper. Basically, it's filling out some information about, um, your school and/or your district and contact information. It's not binding. Some schools sign, i- you know, like anything else, you sign up, um, and, um, you know, you can be active or come and go. E- everyone does something a little bit different. But in order to apply for any of our funding, you do have to be an active partner for a minimum of six months. So, um, the three programs that we h- have for, um, funding, um, is our Infrastructure Application Program. This is, um, this is where the big money is. It's part of the TIP program, um, but through MassDOT. And it's, um, last used in twenty-nineteen. This was, you know, like, eight hundred to one-point-three-million-dollar, uh, projects. The, uh, next deadline, we anticipate being, um, the, um, Secretary of Transportation has already mentioned, at an award ceremony earlier this month, that it will be, um, coming up again this, probably late fall. We also do what we call a Signs and Lines Program. This is more of a mini-grant. It's more technical assistance, um, for regulatory signage as well as pavement markings. This is also, uh, a quick install, so the application process is in the fall with, um, the deadline for completion being in, um, by the end of the school year. So, um, many grants, for example, the Infrastructure Grant, that can take, um, really four to six years, but the Safe Roots, um, Signs and Lines Program is, um, during that particular school year. And then lastly, uh, MassDOT last year came out with the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, which is, was a, a huge success. Many different, um, about sixty-five percent of Massachusetts communities, um, received a grant. Many times, the Safe Roots to School was actually a bonus, or if you, um, yeah, on a check-off box. So if you, um, could demonstrate that it had something to do with the program and/or a school or school zone, um, you got extra points. So, um, it doesn't hurt. And again, these were quick install grants. Uh, as you can see, it's a wide range of, um, funding, um, monies. Um, but it's, um, so for schools, for example, um, I've had schools put in the rectangular rapid flocking beacons. Some, um, tactical urbanisms, and you put some road diets in around schools, um, flashing school zone signage, you know, things like that. So, next, please. Just wanted to show you this quickly. So, um, again, the most unusual year that none of us would like to go through again. So this is the, um, our guidance document that we, um, came out with and we had a webinar, um, about a week or two after the DESI, um, July Guidance Document came out. Um, and this is really how we tried to steer most people during this past year. So, again, task force formation, so you know what's going on and, um, you know, you had the proper stakeholders at the table, arrival dismissal guidance. Many principals found when people were going to school hybrid, um, you know, it, it was more adaptable i- and easier to manage, if you would. So we tried to make those things, uh, more lasting. Uh, different mapping tools, educational tools. We did a lot remote as well, um, uh, virtual as well as in-person. And then, um, we have Crossing Guard Resources for training and, um, just trying to get the kids moving. So, next, please. So Burlington, here we are. So, again, thank you for your time. Um, so last month, the Burlington Ad-Hoc Transportation Committee, um, I was very happy, very pleased because they did recommend that, um, the town of Burlington embrace the Safe Roots program. In order to do that, you would need to partner all the schools with a Safe Roots program. Again, this is a one-minute requirement, um, that you will not have to do again. Um, and then I would need to have a conversation with, you know, identifying a point person or whomever wants to come to the table about what your school community needs are. You know, uh, one of the easier things that we can, if you were so interested, is, um, uh, try to think about when we could do professional development for, um, head and bike safety curriculum. Again, this is, um, it's one thing for me to go to school to school, but, um, having the time to do professional development, it, it, it's more equitable because then all the students of that grade across the whole district would be participating. We can also work with, um, again, I don't know if it's police in, in, for Burlington, um, or if it's your transportation department. Um, we have Crossing Guard materials, um, written and, uh, in video, um, to try to, um, help with that. So, next, please. So I always like to end with a happy slide and, um, just to celebrate as student commuters. Um, so many times, you know, we, it's kind of a, an afterthought how they're getting to and from school, but we all want safety to be a priority once they get there. So we like to make the entire journey as safe as possible. And, um, safe for bike racks is one way of, of, um, you know, um, making this fun and safe for everyone. So, thank you. That's the end of the slide presentation.
Judy, thank you very much. The, um, your last slide, um, struck a chord with me because we, um, had full bike racks this fall for the first time in a, in a long time, given that we had, um, limited bus capacity and more students walking and riding and riding their bikes, so.
I think, um, there are many challenging parts about this year, but, uh, um, I think more students walked and rode their bikes to school than, um, we've had, had historically. Just because we had to limit, uh, capacity on the bus at the elementary level. So, um, so it's certainly something that is there. There, there is a community group in Burlington, and I'm sure the school committee would, um, maybe like to ask some questions about, um, they are looking at, um, different sidewalk configurations and it might be an opportune time for us to, um, extend ourselves and, and, and take advantage of some of the resources that you're offering. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Judy. Um, questions or comments from the board? Anybody? Martha.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad that this has come up again, um, to, to the forefront. I think it is important. I think for me in Burlington, the biggest concern is, is it safe for our kids to walk or bike to school? And I totally applaud the efforts of a lot of our town meeting members and other people where sidewalks are being focused on and funded at much, much higher rates than they had been previously. You know, it, last fall, there was a lot less traffic, you know, when we had more kids walking and more kids, uh, riding their bikes. But I worry a lot about, um, people riding, anybody, adults or kids riding their bikes in Burlington. It's, it just doesn't seem safe. And I'm wondering if we could be, take this moment and not lose it and t- find a way, uh, I don't know if the Transportation Committee can do this, but is there a way we can reach out to families where the kids did ride their bikes? Or walk to school this year for the first time or, or not? And, you know, what, what worked? Which roads were felt safe or what wasn't working? So we could then identify what, where are the areas in town that really might benefit from the most attention to this? Because, um, I would, you know, for all the different reasons, I, I think it'd be really great to have a lot more, uh, support for kids to walk and bike to school. So that, I don't know who or how that, that would happen, but I, it occurred to me that if we could ta- get information from our families and our students, um, from their experience this year when there were a lot more, uh, uh, kids riding and, and, uh, walking. That would be a, a moment we might benefit from.
And again, Judy, you mentioned the first step is for us as a district to join the Safe Roots to School community. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, yes. It's, um, it, it literally takes about thirty-five seconds. It's very quick. And, you know, you might have heard of the, the DEPs, uh, Department of Environmental Protections Green Team. They require, um, schools to register every year and we do not. So you just register once and it's.
All right, I'll, I'll do it in thirty-four, Judy. So, all right, that'll be the first step. Uh, again, Mr. Chair, any other, any other questions?
I think Mrs. Monaco has a comment.
I'd just like to thank you for your presentation. I think we need some time to think about it. I agree with Martha that, um, it'd be nice to know how people did, uh, students did, getting to school. It's been a tough year. And I'm concerned about safety too, but I think the whole purpose of this is. And I'm concerned about safety too, but I think the whole purpose of this is to try and find safe ways. So thank you for your presentation, and we will give it some thought.
Anybody else? Yeah, thanks, Judy. It, I mean, this past year has kind of opened everybody's eyes to walking to school again and biking for some people, I guess. But Burlington, historically, at least the past thirty or forty years, has been hundred percent busing. You could live four hundred yards away from a school, and you'd get a bus ride if you wanted one. So I think now, like I said, people's eyes are opened and we'll try to get some feedback through whatever sources we're able to see how it went this year. You know, I don't think a lot of people might, were very happy with it to begin with, but I'm very curious by the end as to how much they, you know, once they get in the routine, it looked like kind of a fun, if you drive by the schools in the morning, there's all the kids walking up and down the sidewalks. It was kind of a lively scene. So it's a, it's a, it's a long road, and, you know, there's all sorts of issues that come into play, as you mentioned in your presentation, but we're certainly willing to explore them. I believe there's a hand raised, two hands raised. Director Kuna is indicating there were two hands raised. So who was it, Bob? John Strauss.
Hi, thank you very much. It's a very instructive meeting. Thank you, Judy. That was a great presentation. And I just want to say, as a member of the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee, we looked a little bit at the Safe Roots to Schools, which is a very helpful program. And I also wanted to just point out that part of the Safe Roots to School program includes sidewalk construction, includes bump outs for traffic. And I, I had a slide, if you want to look at it, I can share it. But several communities around us have taken advantage of this and have received money to help them build sidewalks. I know there was a resident there was talking about, is it going to be safe for my child? So this is available. It's not just signs and lines. There's actually construction and engineering and all, which I think is very beneficial for Burlington, because we have to spread out our tax dollar like we did with the Winter Streets Program. We took care of Terrace Hall, which was one of the hotspots identified by the high school kids. And there is a representative of the high school here to speak. She presented in front of the Transportation Committee. And, you know, she might have a little something to say about getting to school safer. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Millie Nash. Think you might be muted, Millie.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. As a, the chairperson of the Transportation Study Committee, a lot of our members are here tonight. I'd like to thank Judy for coming again, but I see that Steve Moran is here. And when I was a part of the bike, the sidewalk committee with him, we talked with Martha Simon about this. And I do want to hear the student representatives who have taken a great deal of interest and responsibility on this. The one question I have is, when is, is there a certain deadline coming up? Or is it open to apply anytime? Because if it takes thirty-five seconds to be a part of this and you don't have to pay, I would get into the queue, if you will. And while you're thinking about it and thinking of all the transportation needs in Burlington, that you be in a position that you can do something. That's all I'll say for now, because so many people have really important things to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Millie. Great, Judy? Sure.
Thank you. So again, I just want to reiterate, in order to apply for any Safe Roots funding, you have to be an active partner for six months. So as much as, you know, signing up is quick, we need to get some activity on the books, which is why I suggested, even if the infrastructure is a primary concern for the Burlington community, education happens every day. So the life skills of how to negotiate a parking lot, how to really use a crosswalk. You know, we see parents jaywalking. We want the students to understand why they should not be doing that, et cetera. So that's why I made the recommendations that I did for things that we could kind of step off the plate pretty quickly and get implemented. So.
Thank you. So anybody else up there?
Dave Van Camp and Eileen Sickler.
All right, Dave Van Camp.
Thank you, Judy, for the great presentation. We're not surprised because we've seen you give it before. And as a member of the Transportation, Ad Hoc Transportation Committee and a town meeting member from precinct seven, we've been looking at this closely for well over a year. And the Safe Roots to School program was unique in that it didn't cost anything to join. And as you might have heard in the last half hour, it offers engineering resources. So questions of, gee, we'd like to know where the hotspots are. We could tell you, but so can they. They have that walk audit. It's part of the activity. Education is part of that activity. We know, all of us on this call, how tough resources are to get. It's tough to get funding. It's tough to get bodies. Here we have an offer on the table for money and bodies. This seems like a no-brainer. We should jump on this immediately, get in that queue for funding, but take advantage of all the resources. This would solve a lot of our resource problems. So I would encourage more than just, gee, it's a good idea, but a commitment to action within a defined timeframe, like real soon. And that's what I'd like to hear from the board. And you've got a number of people on the call who've already done a lot of this research, including your own students, who did a great job of identifying the hotspots and the problems. You've got that information now, if you're not back on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Eileen, Eileen Sickler.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Judy, again, for doing such a good presentation. Can you tell me about the arrival and dismissal plan? I mean, is that something that the state could help with us immediately? Or do we have to wait six months for that?
No, you don't have to wait six months to have any of our programming, except for applying for a grant. So that was the only requirement. So for an arrival dismissal observation, basically, I would come a couple mornings. I would come a couple afternoons at dismissal and just observe. And then I usually put together a report. The report includes engineering suggestions as well as encouragement evaluation. It hits all the Es. So that way, we separate our recommendations that way, so that it's easier. You know, for example, the encouragement would go to the principal, but the engineering suggestions would go to either school facilities or town planning and engineering. As much as everyone wants to hear the conversation, you know, don't want to overwhelm anybody with, you know, a list. So it's generally a twenty-plus page report that we generate. However, you need the kiddos to be in school. So, so that's the caveat for that. What we can do with students not being in school is conduct a walk audit, which is, again, the home-to-school experience that the students are, where they travel to school. Usually, it's definitely within, usually a mile of the school, sometimes a little bit less. And to do that, I would just have a conversation with the school principal or designee. What are their concerns? What are their, you know, areas, what's on their wish lists? What would they like changed if they could? And then I would really ask for as many people who wanted to participate, because again, everyone has a different lens they're looking through when they are looking at the neighborhoods. So it could be overgrown vegetation. It could be, you know, flooding because of the storm grades. It could be, you know, the signage has faded or the science isn't regulatory or lacking. So this is, the more the merrier, again, with that. And again, we've had students come on that, student council, youth commissions. It's, it's an event.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Martha, did you have something?
So I know Sarah has something that I, is there someone else who had their hand up? Because I did want to comment on this part of it. And I don't know, Sarah, if you feel like you should go now or if I should make a comment on what people have been talking about up till now.
You can make a comment. I can go.
Okay, I, you know, I have looked into this before, as was mentioned, and had some conversations with people. And I'm wondering, what I didn't understand, what I'm wondering is, Judy, at the beginning of your presentation, you talked about a task force. Or, you know, what needs, what do we need to do to make this start happening? Do we just need to set up an appointment with you and the principals? You know, do we need to have a PTO agree to do this? Do we need to have maybe the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee would be the point person? I don't know. What would we need to do to start this happening?
That's a great question. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. There's a pause between in-person and the web. It can honestly, it can look any way that you want it to look like. If you already have a sidewalk committee, in some communities, my hometown, Safe Roots is a subcommittee of that, you know, or a different type of ped bike. I think the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee that did the work last year, reported a town meeting, has dissolved because they were ad hoc. I can definitely just meet with principals. I can meet with PTOs if we want to get a small group together and just do really a group think about what the district needs and kind of strategize how best to approach the challenges and successes that Burlington is experiencing. We could do it that way. Anything that I do, though, that the Mastart Safe Roots School program does, is, has to come back to the schools. So as much as I can work with everyone in municipal, I can work with the local Y. I can, you know, et cetera. The, any report I generate is owned by the school department. So at the end of the day, I need permissions to do things through the schools. The schools don't have to do the heavy lifting, but that's where I start and that's where I end. So, for example, if I were to do a arrival dismissal report or a walk audit report, you know, everyone will be invited to have a review of the report, but then I would have to ask the school to permission to release that even to the town engineer. So it's just, it's just the way we operate. So, so this is a long-winded response, but it can really, I can meet with one person. I can meet with five people. I can, it's however you feel best to have the initial conversation.
I have a couple of questions on this Ad Hoc Transportation Committee. Was this group appointed by a town meeting or is it just a group of people that got together?
Anybody have an answer for that, Eileen?
Yes, yes, hi. Thank you. So January, correct me, guys, if I'm wrong, January twenty twenty, a town meeting, there was a resolution, and this committee was formed, appointed by the moderator.
Okay. And my second question, are there any members of the committee who are parents of young children?
Well, I was the parent of a young children that are now all taller than me, but.
Currently parents of young children. All right, so.
Reaching for understanding the question. We all know people who are parents of young children. We've been through the experience. I'm furious to know what you're driving at.
I think, in my mind, there is an enormous safety issue involved here. And I think that it makes a lot of sense to try to do some of these things. But rather than come up with a plan that involves only those of us who do not have small children in the school, I think we should have some parents involved in it. People who send their children out the door every day to go to school. I would like their thoughts before we do too much work in this direction. I think it's a great idea, but I think that we need, we need the, the group of people who are going to be using this, the people whose children are young and going to school every day. And I assume you're talking about Safe Roots, not just for high school, but other schools as well?
Actually, the Safe Roots Program, where, because we're federally funded, where our scope is only for grades K through eight.
Oh.
So, so I cannot work with high schools.
Okay, so that even reinforces my thought that if we have kindergartners and first graders and second graders, et cetera, walking to school, I think we should have a lot of input from those parents. Just my two cents.
Again, Mr. Chair, we can fill out the form. I think it's, I think Bob already has it filled out, actually, now. So we can submit it, and then I can follow up with Judy and work with the communities from town. And again, I think that it's worth sort of exploring, seeing where they can help. We work very closely with our traffic officers at the Burlington Police Department. I'm sure they would want to be a part of these conversations as well. So again, I think we have a lot of different groups that maybe this will be the impetus for bringing everyone together and having some coordinated conversation, which was the point of the presentation this evening. So, so I think we can, we can do that and.
Point taken. Judy, thank you very much for opening the, opening the conversation. Clearly, it's a great resource to assist as we try to implement some of these types of strategies going forward. But, you know, for most of us sitting behind the table here, this is the first that we've heard too much about it or in any depth at all. I understand that some of the folks who are in the committee have heard, have met with you before this. But, so it's going to take some time, and we're hampered by the fact, as you point out, that the kids aren't in school now. So some of the practical studies that have to be done might have to wait a little bit. And likewise, a lot of the teaching staff and the principals aren't necessarily readily available either.
I do have a question, though. I agree with Martha. With everything being so fresh, is there any way to get a quick survey out for the parents who had kids who were walking and riding bikes? You know, like right now, what's fresh in their mind before we, I don't want it to go the whole summer. And then we send some sort of survey out, and it's not fresh in their mind how things went, you know, this back half of the year while they were walking and riding bikes. Is there any way to just kind of get a feel for the safety? Or whether, did people feel there were safety issues for those who were participating right now?
Conversation in her presentation.
Oh, was it? So are we doing something quickly or? Oh, is that, okay. Go ahead, Sarah. We'd love to hear you know.
And again, Sarah, we don't really have the agenda booked for a full presentation, so we can certainly have you come back. But I know you wanted to make a comment tonight, and you've done a lot of work. I think one of the Es that, of the six Es that Judy talked about was equity. And I think you were looking at transportation through an equity lens. Is that correct? Okay, Sarah.
Okay. So, hi, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. Today, I'm here to represent Borough Youth, Burlington Against Racism Youth, and I work with the Transportation Committee. This was a, we essentially created a transportation survey for students at Burlington High School and MSMS to participate in and essentially ask about specific experiences regarding transportation inequities. And so as a sort of like compiling survey data, we created a slideshow. And I'm sure that there's a way that we can share the slideshow with all school committee members for you to take a look at after I'm done speaking or whenever. But the survey responses were basically a combined of like one thousand one hundred eighty-four students at the high school and the middle school. And I'll essentially just talk about the main takeaways from the entire survey and not go into too much detail. But overall, what we learned was that thirteen percent of students reported that a lack of transportation had prevented them from engaging in school-sponsored activities. Thirteen percent does not seem much, but then if you realize that that's almost one in every ten students who could not participate in school-like activities, like extracurricular activities, just because of transportation issues, you can tell how important it is to implement initiatives and programs similar to like Safe Roots. similar to like Safe Roots over here, like their presentations moments ago. Another big takeaway from the survey was that 45% of students would participate in more school activities if had the transportation necessary to do so. And when, when I say transportation necessary, that could either mean better sidewalks, more sidewalks, or like just access to transportation in like a town-wide way, like a bus, some sort of bus, or some sort of like system of like students to get the right necessary to come to school or any places where there are school-sponsored activities. And when it comes to like transportation inequities in general, there are often like different things that accompany it, like that could be issues with parents giving rides to them. There could be just weather conditions. And so, we looked at all of that in the survey, and I, there's more details in the slideshow, so I would just recommend all of you to take a look at that. And then also transportation inequities also cover different parts of schools, so whether that's walking to school, riding a bike to school, getting a ride to school, or attending sports practices as well, because those are something that's a very, like, a key important to students' lives at BHHS and at MSMS. And it's crazy to think that people cannot be part of all of these things because of transportation issues. Another part of the survey that we did was asking people to identify unsafe and problematic places for students to ride a bike or walk in the, in Burlington. And in the slideshow, there are links to about a dozen areas or streets in the town that, that essentially are considered, like, what we consider unsafe to walk or ride on. And unsafe meaning either it's like too close to the traffic, or they're, like, the sidewalks are broken and they're not in good conditions, or we just don't have the sidewalks there. So, um, all these issues are outlined in the slideshow more specifically, and there's links to a street view of the streets, which you can see on Google better. You can like see where the sidewalks are or are not. So you can take a look at that through the slideshow. And then, um, just final, like, takeaways, obviously, one of the main things is that we need safe sidewalks. And we recommend taking a look at the locations that are in the slideshow to act, to basically identify where the unsafe places in the town are. And that also includes either fixing the sidewalks or just adding, like, creating new sidewalks for, for students to use. And then the second major takeaway is that we need access to transportation, obviously. Students don't have their own transportation, they're missing out on sports, clubs, and extracurricular activities. And we do think that we need more late buses that can support these different events and these different activities. And as us Barre Youth, we wanted to present this data, and we did to the Transportation Committee who we worked with, and also to the school committee as they're planning to, I guess, take their, like, consideration to participate in the Safe Roots program, that we need access to reliable transportation for all students. And it is essentially a privilege to have reliable transportation, and the fact that a lot of students don't have that is just mind-boggling to me. And so, um, we think that when it comes to just having access to attending extracurricular activities, something that's very important in students' social life, but also as they're making their way to college and need extracurricular activities every single day, we think that you all need to, like, just take this into consideration, and hopefully you can take a look at the slideshow to look at the survey data in more depth. But that would be it for me.
I was gonna say. Would like to see a survey at the elementary school level, because it sounds like that's, the surveys you did were middle school and high school. And I think it's important to get feedback from the elementary school parents and.
So, you, Ms. Bond, you asked if we can do it, the answer is yes, we, we can. And Sarah, we'll look at your surveys to see if we can maybe adapt some of the questions for, for elementary, and, and then we'll follow up. I'll make sure the committee has a copy of your presentation. Bob, you have the presentation, so we'll get that distributed. And, um, again, Sarah, if we have questions, we'll certainly follow up.
Thank you, Sarah. Judy, thank you very much, the presentation.
Excuse me, I'm just wondering if Judy has any survey-type suggestions for this kind of a survey that Mrs. Bond just suggested? Do you, you have things that would help us create the right questions? Because I, I think that the survey that Sarah and the Barre Youth Group did might not be completely focused on the kinds of issues we'd be thinking about for the elementary-level kids. So yes, you're shaking your head?
Great question, yes, we do have a survey, it's available in nine languages. It's a two-minute survey. It tells, it, it, we call it a parent travel survey. And basically, it tells us how your student gets to school, how your student gets from school, and approximately where they live. We, we, we ask for cross-streets, because it's anonymous. So from that, we can generate a four-page report, along with a preliminary walk-in shed. And with that walk-in shed, we can, if we have enough participation, we can develop route maps from that. The other way we just develop route maps, if we were to ask central administration for student address data, this would be just scrub data, anonymous, we just need streets and street numbers per school, so just a spreadsheet with different tabs. And from that, we can, one of the diagrams was actually that bullseye concentric circle, that's an example of what that will look, look like in that. However, but with that, we, we learn where students live, but not how they get to and from school. So, we do not have a survey that helps explain why. Why you take this mode or why you don't take a mode.
Is it possible to add a few, I mean, I, I would like to suggest that we try to use what they have, but I'm wondering if it's possible to add a few questions that would be more specific to this past year's experience and to the parents having an opportunity to say, what were the things that worked? Or what were the things that didn't work, that kind of, is it possible to add to it, or is it a standalone?
Unfortunately, it's a standalone. This is something that we partnered with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, and so it's pretty much, the, the software is the software, and I can't, I can't tweak it, I'm sorry.
But I would like to suggest that might, maybe you could start with that, and maybe Dr. Conti, you and could figure out a way to.
This is an example of what the survey looks like, and I can actually send you just, you know, a random report, so you can see what, what the report looks like, in case that is the type of information you might want to look at. But the positives, too, is that you, your, it's parent engagement. And so, you know, the conversation's being had.
Thank you.
Judy, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and, uh, thank you, everybody, for particip- participating in the discussion. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is public participation. If there is anybody on the remote call who'd like to discuss something not otherwise on the agenda, now's the time to do it. No sign of a.
Nope.
Moving along, informational reports, subcommittee reports. Does anybody have any subcommittee reports they'd like to bring forward?
I don't really have a subcommittee report, but I did want to talk about, I felt honored being able to attend an event this weekend. The Troop 103 was inducting four Eagle Scouts, and two of them were the first females to ever be inducted into, in the Eagle Scout ranking for this particular troop. And I was telling the, the, the young women that they're very fortunate that they had this opportunity, because when I was their age, I, I wanted to be a part of the Boy Scouts and not a part of the Girl Scouts, because they did much, the things they did were a lot more cool than the Girl Scouts did back then. And so, I congratulated them all, and it was a nice event at the forty, Camp Forty Acres, and it was a lot of fun to go and attend, so.
Anybody else, Martha?
I don't have a, a subcommittee report, but I did want to say that I am doing some more research into our subcommittee assignments, looking into the various ways that they are relevant to and match our policies, or maybe don't match our policies, and those kinds of things. So I will be, when I have more information, I will share that. And it's mine, and I, I didn't check this particularly, but I think we have a transportation subcommittee, and I think it's Mrs. Bond, who was assigned to that. And so, I don't know if you want to be the person to kind of be the liaison for this conversation about how do we move forward with Safe Roots? That might be a, a connected, related thing, so. And I, I don't swear by that, I'd have to double-check it, but I think that's, that's who was appointed this year.
It's, um, it was Kristen and me.
We had a new election this year, so we, okay.
So it would be Catherine and me.
If that's what we.
If it was Catherine, I'm not sure if it was Catherine or someone else, but it was definitely me.
Any other subcommittee reports? Seeing none, Ways and Means? Is Roger here tonight? Or anybody from Ways and Means?
Roger's here.
I, I have nothing, thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Okay, item number seven, coronavirus update from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we just wanted to, um, let the committee know that the last day of school went smoothly, thanks to the efforts of many, many people. And, um, the, um, it was a, um, a smooth end to a kind of a interesting year. So, um, I think everyone was ready, the students and, and the adults. And I just couldn't be more grateful for all of the work that everyone put in. I, had you asked me, and you did ask me in August and September, if I thought we were gonna be in person into October, and I probably would have said no. So, um, again, on pond reflection, I just think a lot of people just went way above and beyond and, um, in very challenging situations, and really focused on doing their jobs, coming to work, and focused on learning. And, um, so this last day of school, I've been through many, many last days of school, and this one was different. So, I tried to reflect on that a little bit, um, when I communicated with you over the weekend, so. Anyway, I just, it's, was just, it was just, made me feel a lot of gratitude for a lot of people, so. And our extended school year and summer programs start up in first week of July, so we'll, we'll, we'll be back at it very soon.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Good job, Eric.
No, it's everyone else.
Good job, everyone else.
Good job, everyone else.
Item B, elementary enrollment.
This is an incomplete picture, but I just wanted to share with the committee some of what we're seeing. And I just wanted to highlight first grade at Fox Hill. First grade at Fox Hill is currently at 91, and that's across four sections, which puts us at 22 and 23 for those classrooms. Again, in Burlington context, that's, has been unacceptable from the committee's perspective. If you look at Pine Glen at 31, across three sections, that puts us Pine Glen at 10 and 11. Again, wouldn't be afraid to run a 10 or 11 class in first grade, honestly, I wouldn't. But more than likely, it looks like we're going to have to move one of the first grade sections from Pine Glen to, to Fox Hill, so we balance out that. So Mr. Rosenblatt is trying to find a classroom and free up a classroom. And, um, and then just looking at that class at Fox Hill, you know, like how a snake eats, that, that bubble is gonna then travel from first to second to third to fourth to fifth. So, I'm not exactly sure how we're going to do that, but that, that class is, is going to need five homerooms, if we're gonna keep it under 20. What?
Grade one.
Grade one. So, um, again, where 22 or 23, maybe in fourth or fifth grade, may be a bit of a different animal. Again, K to 2, I'd really like to try to get that classroom down. Again, this is an incomplete picture, we're seeing lots of move-ins, lots of, you know, even some withdrawals. It's, everything is in motion during the summer, but it looks like we're gonna have to make some adjustments, so.
We have space for that?
I think if we're gonna have to displace a specialist class, Bob, is that correct? And again, I, I don't want to, Mr. Rosenblatt is working on that, so I'm not sure what decisions he's made, but we, we were gonna have to displace a special. And again, I think it feeds into the narrative as to why we're building a new Fox Hill school, but it's, it's one of those things where, I know the school committee's committed to small class sizes, and so, we're just gonna have to make some adjustments.
How about kindergarten? Typically, we have a certain amount, in, in any given year, that the numbers go up between beginning of June and the beginning of September. Do you anticipate, what kind of a, what kind of a bump do you anticipate over what we're looking at? Because they seem, they're getting kind of tight.
They are getting kind of tight, and, and historically, we've done a, I think, a better job, more recently, having parents sign their children up, so we actually get a better idea of the numbers earlier. And so, I think, and plus Robin Milliano is outstanding, so she is basically compiling the numbers in real time. So, I think we're okay right now, but we're close. So, um, I think that we're just gonna have to watch things carefully. The enrollment projections that we have to do with the MSBA, Mr. Murphy, we've looked through that once, so we're gonna have to make sure we advocate and are looking at not only the students that we have, but future development in town and, and other aspects that may impact enrollment moving forward. So, we, we are certainly gonna need some additional classrooms, and I know the committee does not want specials to be outside of classrooms and in carts, but I think we may, for certain classes, have to look at that. And I'll, I'll just keep you apprised as we, as we go, I don't have all the answers, it's only the end of June, but it looks like we're gonna have some movement.
Okay. Questions?
I, I want to first thank you for staying on top of that. It's really important that we know what that is to the extent that we can with something that's in such flux. And I'm just wondering if there was an article in the paper, it was a different school district, but there were parents who were asking for their students not to move ahead, be promoted to the next grade. And I hope that's not happening, because I do think that there was unfinished learning this year. But I think that all of our students, you know, are developmentally ready to go to the next grade, and our teachers are prepared to understand that there may have been some areas that didn't get addressed. But I'm just wondering if that's part of the flux of numbers in, in the grades? Because that would change which grades had which numbers, even if it was the same kids in the building.
I'm not sure I can answer that question precisely. I think what I would say is, we didn't see a lot of unfinished learning this year. I think where we saw learning issues were, was last spring, March to June. I think at the elementary level, we had our students in five days a week, I, we saw growth. So, I, Ms. Simon, I'm not sure we've got, getting a particularly high demand for retention. The research is pretty clear on retention, it's not, again, I think there are some exceptions, but we don't need to have a, a long conversation about retention tonight. So I, I don't think that's it, I think there are some parents for work reasons, childcare reasons, might have withdrawn their students and enrolled them in a school that would, might have been going longer days, at least initially in the fall, so we have some of those students moving back. Some parents actually like that experience, and then are, are keeping their students in those schools. So, there just seems to be more ebb and flow than we would typically see, and we're just keeping an eye on it. But where we already have a problem, I, I'm saying, is at Fox Hill in first grade. And I just made sure, Mr. Murphy, I had to say that before Mrs. Monaco said it. So that's, um, so I, that's why I brought it up tonight. The classes are getting too big at Fox Hill, so, so I, I just.
The point is, Fox Hill, like, is bursting at the seams. The point is, Fox Hill, like, is bursting at the seams. I mean, Memorial has way fewer kids.
Again, not way fewer. I think Memorial is probably where it should be.
Significantly fewer.
Significantly fewer, but, so, I hate redistricting, but if things continue to be out of whack, we're going to have to look at maybe rebalancing the town.
What about voluntary? What about if some people would like to go to Memorial?
I don't have the number in my head, but I, we must have close to 40 or 50 students who are already volunteering to go out of zone. And we've accommodated every family that has asked to be out of zone. So it may be that I need to not accommodate everybody, but then who do you say no to? So I think that, I think we are, we only have so many classrooms. So I think we're just having to need, we need more classrooms. So I think that's one of the things that we are looking at. And again, the mobility of students is not typically a Burlington issue. We have a very stable student body. It just seems this year has triggered some mobility that we are needing to respond to, that's all. So again, Ms. Simon, I want to actually answer your question. It's really, it's not, retention is not our, is not our challenge. And I just think it's, we have a growing number of students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this subject? Seeing none, we'll move on to school buildings and facilities.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Kuna.
Well, as Dr. Conti just mentioned, we just started our summertime, so I do want to start to thank the custodians and the maintenance staff for the summer ahead of us. I know they're already started off with the crazy amount of work that is due upon them. But again, I think like every single year, some way, somehow, they do manage to get it done. So like I said, I want to applaud them. Also, the clerical staff still in the building as well, too. I'm sorry. I think one of the items that we need to talk about, of course, is the feasibility study, which I've been promising for a while. That is ongoing. Again, there are four companies that are working together to complete this feasibility study for us. Two days last week, they were in, they're in tomorrow. They'll be in on Thursday, and they'll be in on Monday. Again, different variants in the companies, but one same end goal is really to complete this feasibility study. Again, this is strictly for the high school. Looking at HVAC, we're looking at structural integrity. We're looking at any codes that may be triggered due to the amount of work being done to the building. And again, all of that will be compiled into that report. Again, ongoing, and I hope to have that soon. One of the other items on this is in regards to the Burlington High School Statement of Interest. I know that we have the Fox Hill Building Committee coming up in the next item, but the Burlington High School Statement of Interest, there is an item that needs to be read by the school committee. And if you all adopt it, then that will need to be signed off, and I will need to submit that. Again, we're up against the deadline, which is Friday for submittal. This is the last part that I need for that.
We're prepared to get that done. Okay.
Oh, that's later on. So, so then I guess we can move on to the next item, unless there are some questions.
Any questions for Bob? Thank you. Yeah, we do have the Statement of Interest. Okay, item E. D, Fox Hill Building Committee Approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Bob again. But the, in your packets, as we've discussed in previous meetings, we need the school committee to vote and approve a Fox Hill Building Committee. And we can read down the names in a minute. I just want to make sure that I reiterate that this is a five or six or seven-year process, that if there are people who want to be involved, to honor this list, there'll be opportunities for people to be involved. There may have, we may have received emails that got lost in the shuffle of the, of the, of the school year. So I don't want anyone to feel like they're missing out if they're not on this list tonight. We have to vote a list, and we have to submit that to the, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which we will do. And then, as we experienced with both the Memorial and the Middle School, there were times when people stepped off the committee and other times when people sort of stepped on the committee, and there's a process for doing that. So this isn't, this isn't high stakes at this time. So, Bob, do I need to read the whole thing?
No. I'm sorry, Dr. Conti, no, you don't have to read it. Again, this is a requirement of the MSBA. This is one of the third things that we have to do for requirements. There is a template that we followed. So in regards to Dr. Conti's comments earlier, as far as anybody who may have inadvertently been missed or people that may express interest later on to join the committee, there will be plenty of opportunities. But by following the template, we filled and checked those boxes to make sure that we get this, you know, completed tonight, so then we can submit this to the MSBA. Again, I don't believe it needs to be read in full, but I think it needs to be agreed upon by the school committee that they're aware of it. There are some things that are not on the form in front of you, but in a different document that we have, which basically it asks for addresses, phone numbers, email addresses, and so forth. So again, I believe when this was submitted to you, we've been compiling additional information. So if you see some empty boxes on there, it's because we had to get that later on.
I think we should read the.
Yeah, that's what I think so as well, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the, the list, as we're sitting here this evening, that we'll be asking the school committee to approve and to appoint is as follows. And as both Dr. Conti and Bob mentioned, some of these are required, some of these positions are required by the MSBA. So, in any event. An SBC member who is MCPPO certified, and that's Nicole Clashia, Business Manager. Local Chief Executive Office, John Denizio, is the Town Accountant, Assistant Town Administrator. The Administrator or Town Manager, so Paul Sagorino, our Town Administrator is on the committee. School Committee Member. We're required to have at least one school committee member. We, as a committee, have talked about appointing all five members. And then depending on who's able to attend at any given time, we can play that by year, but all five school committee members are listed. These, these meetings are published as a public meeting, anyway. Superintendent of Schools is on the committee. Dr. Conti, Local Official Responsible for Building Maintenance, that's Mr. Kuna, he's on the committee. Representative of Office Authorized by Law to Construct School Buildings, John Luther, who's the Senior Building Inspector for the Town of Burlington, he's on the committee. The School Principal, David Rosenblatt, from the Fox Hill School, is on. A Member Knowledgeable in Educational Mission and Function of Facility, Dennis Villano, who's the Director of Technology for the School Department. He was very helpful the last time we went through this. Local Budget Official, a member of the Local Finance Committee, Roger Riggs, was kind enough to agree to do that. A member of the, I think you were Roger, anyway. A Member of Community with Architecture, Engineering, and a Construction Experience, Ed Parsons, has indicated willingness to serve on the committee, and he definitely has that background. Others, Fox Hill Parent, Jennifer Priest. Fox Hill Teacher, we actually have two of them, Tara Carroll and Audrey Boeri. Fox Hill Community Member, George Papianus. Papianus, I'm sorry. And we're also going to have to name a Recording Secretary. I don't know if that's from amongst these people. I will bring somebody in to act as the Recording Secretary, but that, that position has not yet been filled. Christine.
Eric, there's one thing I see from a knowledge of the community perspective that I think is missing. I think we should have another parent, one who actually lives in the vicinity of the school. You know, that lives in the immediate neighborhood around the school. All the people that are on here are great, but I do see that as a gap.
Through the chair, Ms. Monaco, we can always add, add someone. So we can seek to add someone who lives, isn't a butter, to Fox Hill or Course 5.
Doesn't have to be next door, but there are a lot of streets right in that vicinity. And, and I don't see anyone on here that lives right there. And I think the.
We're also, somebody's got to volunteer to do it.
Oh, yeah, but I was under the impression there were quite a few volunteers, no?
Not, not quite a few, but we had some, so we can go back through. And we sort of randomly selected, so we'll, we'll do that. And we can, I'll talk with Mr. Rosenblatt about reaching back up, so we can do it.
Because of all the concerns relative to everything that goes on, not only traffic, but the walking, as we discussed earlier tonight, I would just like to see an additional parent who lives right around there.
And so, yes, we can do that, absolutely. And my recommendation would be not to delay the vote tonight. We can always add a member, just so we can meet the deadline. And then I do want to make sure I point out that we have a special educator included in our, one of our teachers.
Great.
Any other comments or questions on the School Building Committee? Because if not, the Chair will entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Appoint the people who were just named.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero zero. So Mr. Kuna will get that submitted to the MSBA. Time for, under our deadline. All right, item A, Communication. Burlington High School Statement of Interest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. School Committee needs to authorize the Superintendent to submit a Statement of Interest for the renovation of Burlington High School. The verbiage for the vote on the next page needs to be used. After approving the vote, the School Committee needs to approve the June 22 minutes for the Statement of Interest portion of the June 22, 2021 School Committee Meeting. So you're going to approve just this section of minutes tonight, which is sort of out of, out of the norm because we need to submit by Friday. So again, it's recommended the School Committee take two votes, the approval of the Statement of Interest using the verbiage that I'm going to read to you, and the second vote to approve the June 22 minutes for the Statement of Interest portion of the June 22, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Sharon, how did I do? Excellent.
So, so far.
So far. Thirty-four seconds. All right. All right. The Statement of Interest is being submitted by a city or town. A vote in the following form is required from both the City Council, Board of Aldermen, or the Board of Selectmen, equivalent governing body, and the School Committee. Bob, my understanding is the Selectmen voted last evening? A week ago Monday. Okay, the Statement of Interest being submitted, whatever, okay. Please use the text below. Please read the verbiage below into the record. Resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on June 22, 2021, prior to the Statement of Interest submission closing date, the School Committee of Burlington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated June 9, 2021 for the Burlington High School located at 123 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, 01803, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority number five. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. And priority number seven. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The specific project will update classrooms and replace science labs to be a more effective learning environment. Replace aged-out heating and ventilation cooling equipment that is original construction from 1971. Replace interior building components, lockers, lighting, fire alarm, et cetera, and provide updated security improvements which will extend the life of the existing facility. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the City, Town, Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Moved and.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to submit the Statement of Interest in the form just read into the record by the Superintendent. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Let's do it.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's passed five zero zero. And now, we have to, we need a vote to approve the minutes.
Just this section.
Of just this section of the, of tonight's meeting.
So moved.
So.
So moved.
So moved, seconded, moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions about this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so that's approved, five zero zero. All right. Item B, 2021, 2022 School Committee Meeting Schedule. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is, the dates proposed and are in front of you. They are the second and fourth Tuesday, as is typical. The only thing that's going to be atypical is Ms. Gilbert will not be here with us.
No.
She'll be watching on TV, I'm sure.
So we can, I think we.
Is this an FYI? Does this need to be voted on?
No, I think it's an FYI. We don't need to vote. I just, I think we checked all the fall holidays, but if, if anyone sees an issue, maybe if we could just start from here, you can get these in your calendar. And then if there's a problem, we can, we can make an amendment moving forward. So I think we'll go from there. If we need more during budget season, like always, we can talk about adding them in. But I think this would be a good starting point for everybody.
All right, next item, my favorite time of the year. Evaluation of the Superintendent. The School Committee is required on an annual basis to evaluate the Superintendent in a public session. Leading up till tonight, all the School Committee members were given an evaluation report that was created by DESI. I don't know how many years ago now. I've been using this probably seven or eight years. And it's kind of a rubric type of a thing that they put together in, and that's the, that's the form that everybody uses in evaluating the Superintendent's performance. Each School Committee member submitted their report to me. I then went through them and compiled a summative report that incorporates all of the ratings by the, by the five School Committee members into one summative evaluation report, which will be submitted and put in the, in the Superintendent's record in accordance with the requirements of the state. So tonight, I am going to go through the summative report, which, as I said, incorporates ratings and ratings from the five School Committee members. And there's also some narrative comments that were also made. The way that this summative, or this evaluation report is set up, the first part assesses progress towards goals. The superintendent's progress towards goals, both professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. Those are goals that the superintendent sets for himself and the school committee adopts early on in the school year. And we receive updates as we, as we go through the year with respect to, to those goals. Step two assesses the performance on, the superintendent's performance on standards. And there's a rating score on, on that, which I'll talk about in a second. That the categories there are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then step three is an overall performance, summative performance based on steps one and two that each school committee member filled out. The, the section step one about goals is done. There's, there are five potential, or five possible scores. One is did not meet, and again, this is referring to the goals. Did not meet, some progress, significant process, met, or exceeded. Those are the five possible scores that a school committee member can, can check off with, with respect to these three categories. In the first one, professional practice goals, three of the school committee members checked off, met, and two checked off exceeded the goal. Second one is student learning goals. Again, all five school committee members checked off that the superintendent met those goals. And on district improvement goals, four of the, the members checked off that the superintendent met those goals and one said he exceeded those goals. On the assessment performance standards, there were four possible checkmarks or, or grades or ratings in this area. One is unsatisfactory. The second one is needs improvement. The third one is proficient, and the last one is exemplary. When DESI first put this, this rating report form in place four, five, six years ago, they defined those four categories to assist school committee members in deciding which category they felt was appropriate. Unsatisfactory is performance on a standard or overall is not significantly improved following a rated, rating of needs improvement. In the needs improvement category, its performance on a standard or overall is below the requirements of a standard, but is not considered to be unsatisfactory. Proficient, proficient practice is understand, is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is the rigorous expected level of performance. And then the last one is, is exemplary. Rating of exemplary indicates that the practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally and statewide. We were told at the time that that should very rarely be used, that what they're looking for is, is to get everybody in the proficient category. So with that in mind, on instructional leadership, for the, the school committee members graded, superintendent proficient, one graded exemplary. Student management and operations, three rated proficient, two exemplary. Family and community engagement, three proficient, two exemplary. And professional culture, four proficient, one exemplary. And then in step three, the overall summative performance, there were two proficient's and three exemplary's. In the comment section after that, all the school committee members wrote out a little bit of a narrative that kind of fleshed out some of the rationales for some of the scores that they gave. And this is the cumulative report that I put together with respect to that category. So this is a cumulative report which includes all of the ratings of each of the five school committee members, along with any written comments offered by the school committee members. It is clear from the ratings and the comments that all five committee members were very pleased with Dr. Conti's performance this past year. Every rating by every member in all categories was either proficient or exemplary. Every rating for every goal was either met or exceeded. The written comments reflected the ratings. This past year was especially challenging for the superintendent and his administration and the school committee clearly feels that the superintendent met the challenges with flying colors. One committee member commented that educational leadership, along with kindness and, and understanding the strong areas of Dr. Conti, and all committee members expressed similar sentiments. Another commented that he used creativity, intelligence, and diligence to work his way through the pandemic. DESI, when this report form was created several years ago, stated that the grade of exemplary should be used very rarely and only when the practice could be used as a model of practice regionally or statewide. I feel that the fact that three of the members gave the superintendent an overall grade of exemplary and the other two grades were proficient clearly shows that the committee has a high regard for the superintendent, both personally and professionally, and we are fortunate that he is leading the Burlington School District. So that is the... That is the summative evaluation report for the superintendent for this past school year. And that's the one that will be submitted to the secretary. Speaking for myself, and I've said this before because I've always want, been one that's stuck to the proficient rule. I was told proficient was as high as you should go and I've always done that. This year, I, I, I went above that because as, as high a regard as I've, I have for you in what you do and how you do it, this past year, I think it went over and above. And I think that was clear to anybody who spent any time either behind one of these desks or sitting in a classroom or, or teachers, custodians, parents, anybody could clearly see that there were... The thought and the caring that you had behind all of your decisions was, was, seemed to be the overriding concern. And in environment, like what we just went through, no matter what happens, you're never going to make everybody happy 100% of the time. But I, I can guarantee you, at least in my opinion, that 100% of the people know that you had the, the best interests of the kids, and the, and the staff, and the, and the people that work down here in mind as you try to make your, make your way through the, the, the school year. So I think the, the, the reports were excellent. I think that it was clear to me that all five school committee members are very satisfied with the superintendent's performance and I want to congratulate you for a good year. And with that, anybody else have any questions or comments that they want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is always my favorite agenda item. Again, as I would remind the committee that any superintendent accomplishment is really the recognition of the work of others, of many people. And so two of them are sitting with us here tonight. Patrick Barkin was a, just an incredible resource to the district this year. Building principals were incredibly flexible. Barbara Conley, the nurse leader, and all of our nurses, what an incredible year. And again, our teachers learned tremendous, applied their tremendous talents to new situations. Our support staff and custodians have been here since last June, in the buildings in person. And again, just phenomenal, even outside the district. Susan Luminallo, the board of health, felt like she was a member of the school district. She was communicating with us so much and providing us so much guidance. And Eve and I tried to communicate to the committee, Jen Dodge and BCAT. I think BCAT itself went above and beyond to provide access when we couldn't have spectators and, and allow that other connection that families usually have. And, and I think, you know, BCAT helped us close that, close that gap. So again, I, I can't express enough gratitude to everyone's efforts this year. I think the, the creativity you mentioned really came from everyone who's doing their job just extremely, extremely well. So I didn't think we would stay in school in person as much as we did. And saying that, I'm not disparaging the remote experience at all. I think our teachers made that a high-quality experience. And, and many of our families and students are actually, would, would love to have the remote option continuing, continuing for them. So anyway, so can't happen without the committee's support and without the generous funding from the town meeting and the, and the community. So I think what I've said before and I'll stick to is I, I love my work and there's no better place to do it than in Burlington. So thank you all for that opportunity.
Thank you. We have one additional item to address before we adjourn. It's not technically on our agenda. As I think we're all aware, this is Sharon's last official meeting with us. She may be here in unofficial capacities as needed going forward. But we just wanted to take an opportunity to, to thank you, obviously, and to, and to wish you well in your retirement. We do have, it's a little bit more substantive than an empty bag.
Not much more than an empty bag, unfortunately.
We couldn't fit the whole rocking chair in this bag, so, but that is, that is on order. And so when that comes in, we'll make sure that gets delivered to the house.
Terry said she'd get a plaque for the chair.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working for the committee for 20 years. And all the work is terribly interesting.
Well, not all the work. Not all the work.
For rebuilding committees too.
Yeah. We are looking for a recording secretary on the new building committee. Stole it out there.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
Comments?
Thank you again.
Christine.
Sharon, we love you. I just cannot imagine being without you.
I'm going to miss you all. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Sharon, it's been great.
Thank you, Sharon.
You've done a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I can't believe 20 years.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
It's gone by in a blink of an eye.
I've only been on a year, but it's, it's obvious how, how much of the, the work of the committee is thanks to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Most, most of the work.
Ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, definitely appreciate getting to know you over the past year. And I said, I don't know what I'm going to do as chair without you sitting there directing me what to do. Going to depend on you guys.
She's only a phone call away.
We have four members to help you. And they're all great.
Yeah, but we want you.
I'll see you every once in a while.
Well, enjoy your grandchild.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anything else to come before the committee this evening?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We are adjourned.